Okay, good evening. My name is Jeff Wilson. I'm the moderator of the town and I call this meeting to order. This is pursuant to a warrant for a special town meeting that was issued by the selectmen on October 31st, 2018, which states, "To either of the constables of the town of Berniston and the county of Franklin, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet at the Berniston Elementary School Cafeteria in said Berniston the 27th day of November at 7:00 in the evening in the year 2018, then and there to act on the following articles." And four articles are set out. Concludes, you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting up certified attested copies thereof at least 14 days before the time of holding said meeting at the five places within the town listed below: the Berniston Town Hall, the Berniston Post Office, the Country Corner Store, the Berniston Senior Center, and on the town website. And I have a return from Kathy Montilio, one of the constables stating that the notice was posted at those places at least 14 days before. This is dated November 7th, so that's at least 14 days before today. Therefore, I find that the meeting is properly posted. The time it's passed 7:00, so the meeting is properly in order. That being the case, I'll ask you all to stand and we'll start by pledging allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. So I'll ask perhaps if everybody at the front table can identify themselves, introduce themselves, starting with our foreign clerk.
Mark Braman, selectman.
Brian Keer, selectman.
Dan Arrows.
Lou Bordeaux, town coordinator.
Jane Dutcher, finance committee.
Okay. Okay, so without further ado, we'll go to the first article. Article 1, "Vote to petition the General Court to the end that legislation be adopted precisely as follows: The General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the selectmen approve amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court. The selectmen are hereby authorized to approve amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition." And then the language that's being asked to be given to the General Court is as follows: "An act relative to land in Berniston. Section 1, notwithstanding section 3 of Article 40A of the general laws or any other general or special law to the contrary, the land located at 87 Northfield Road, Berniston, Mass. 01337 shall not be defined as agriculture."
Shall move.
No, we're not finished. Section 2, "This act shall take place upon its passage." And I will note that the Select Board and the Finance Committee each recommend passage of this article. So I'll entertain a motion with respect to this article.
Shall move.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. So any discussion? And I believe we have, perhaps, sir, you can, we have an individual from the entity who's made this proposal, so if you could identify yourself and explain this article for us.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Jim Cooneyhan. I'm the president of the Urban Council.
Okay. Yeah, you have, notwithstanding the fact you're not a resident of the town, you have permission to proceed, so if you can explain this for us.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll try and keep this high level out of respect for everyone's time. To these kind of people, want more retailing more than have to drill down on the full history of how we got to this point. But this really simply is a legislative fix to unintended consequence that literally only affected our project in Berniston. And so what we're asking through home rule petition, and I'm not an expert on home rule petition, but there's a representative from Chairman Marx's office here today that knows a lot more about home rule petition than I do, but has explained to us that that is the most efficient way to fix this unintended consequence. And so when we first started meeting with the town of Berniston back in, I believe it was December of 2015, we had asked the question, "Our read of the zoning laws would allow us to proceed as either an agricultural use or use that required a special permit in the expedited permitting district in the town." We had numerous conversations with just about every board in town, asking if there was a preference of the town for how they would like us to proceed. And the answers were either, "We're indifferent to it," or "We actually think you should proceed as agriculture because we think it fits the character of the community." We obviously wanted to make sure that everyone felt that way, and in 2016 asked the town to give us a letter stating that they did feel that this is agriculture, and the letter was signed by the Select Board, the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, Town Council, and I may be missing one or two. So we proceeded as an agricultural use. Subsequently to that, there was a change in the law, and the legislature wasn't trying to change this specific law, but they were looking for a vehicle to essentially extend the implementation of the recreational law, so where a medical marijuana facility, to extend that by six months. It was supposed to begin on January 1st, 2018. They wanted to extend it to July 1st, 2018, to give themselves more time to develop the regulations to oversee the recreational market. They needed a vehicle to attach that amendment to. The vehicle that changed the definition of agriculture under state law had died in committee and was sitting there. They resurrected that bill, attached the amendment that kicked the can on recreational six months down the line, and it changed our zoning status. In the immediate aftermath, we spoke to Berniston, we spoke to the Attorney General's office, we spoke to the Department of Public Health and oversees the medical marijuana program, and everybody said, "We still think you're okay going forward as an agricultural use as long as Berniston still feels this is an agricultural use." As you may or may not know, the building code enforcement officer is the one who interprets the zoning laws. And he was very clear with us, right up until the time we pulled the building permit, that he agreed that this is an agricultural use. When we went in in September of 2017 to try to get the permit, he explained to us that he had changed his position. He was concerned about the change in the law and the scrutiny that may come on him if he disagreed or potentially disagreed with the Attorney General's view. I'd like to just state for the record, he's been great to work with, otherwise we don't blame him for his change in position. It just had a very strong impact on our business and our ability to move quickly in our business because it was a huge surprise to us, cost us a significant amount of money and a huge delay in the project, and maybe most importantly, has slowed us down in our ability to get to Phase 2 and 3 of this project. We want to grow our business, we want to add jobs. We've hired 15 people already in the town. A lot of them live, I shouldn't say a lot of them, all of them live and work in the local area. We're about to hire about 15 more folks, and people came tonight, just introduced themselves because they're looking for job opportunities. So we would like to move as fast as possible, and this gives us the ability to get our agricultural use back. As a citizen, the obvious concern is, well, aren't we giving up control? And I just want to make it clear that we do not believe in giving up control for two reasons. The first of which is, we would still have to get a building permit, and the Building Commissioner can attach requirements before he issue, he or she, but currently he, issues that building permit. So it's not like we could just do whatever we want and build whatever we want. The Building Commissioner would have oversight of it. Secondarily, all this home rule petition really does is restores the decision back to the town of Berniston, takes it out of state law. We're being excluded from the definition under state law, and it puts it squarely back in the zoning of the town of Berniston. So if Berniston was to decide, even if this home rule petition passed, and down the line Berniston decided, "We no longer think this is agriculture," then we would have to go the special permit route. So the town still has control over this, and we're not asking folks to give up control. Mr. Moderator, I hope that was a sufficient and succinct explanation, and if I haven't answered questions, obviously happy to.
Well, we're about to find out. Yes, sir.
Why is the agricultural designation important to you?
For several reasons. I mean, the first of which is, we had extensive conversations with the town, and again, we in the beginning were willing to go either route, and the agricultural route was the route that folks suggested that we go down. It fits the character of the community. Part of the reason we chose Berniston is that there's a deep history of agriculture in this community and folks that can bring a unique skill set. They may not know how to grow cannabis, but they certainly know and understand agriculture. And those are the folks that we can focus on trying to hire and bring into the business. And then lastly, it gives us some flexibility around the business that we lost with this last-minute change in our status.
Jim, right to farm town.
And obviously Berniston is a right to farm town, which I agree. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So you're asking us, as an agriculture community, to vote, this shall not be defined as agriculture?
Right, under the state law. So it would exclude us from the state law. And again, I'm not an expert on zoning law, but then it now defers back to the Berniston zoning bylaws.
So what is the language designated as zoning?
So currently, and again, I'm not sure it's my place to speak for the town, but currently agriculture is allowed in every zone in town. But again, this specific warrant limits it to our address. So you're not, one of the questions we have is, will this open up the whole town? No, it's just our address.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, sir.
You said you were going to lose some business. What business are you going to be losing?
Not necessarily lose business. What happened was, we ended up with about a four-month delay, so we were originally supposed to begin construction in September because we had to go to the special permit route.
See, it was my understanding. I went to a.
No, no, you have to let him finish his answer, and then you can.
Communicate, two ways. Go ahead.
I'm trying to answer your questions. So in September, when we found out, we had to stop our plans to begin building in September, go through the special permit process. That had a cost of about $100,000 to us in legal and planning fees. We then didn't begin construction until December. Obviously, building in the winter is significantly more expensive, but the single biggest impact was it delayed our ability to get to revenue by about six months. So the total cost to our project was about $1,500,000.
See, my concern is, you know, I give the blessing of that meeting for a shed that you built to grow pot in. That was my understanding. That was it. I didn't want no pot recreational shop in this town. I didn't want nothing like that, just a place to grow your marijuana. That was my understanding. It's like, I don't know, I'm all confused about all this.
Well, we've had a separate vote on that. That's independent of this.
Mr. Moderator, can I just have a second of responsibility? Okay. Yes, sir, if your concern is about retail recreational sales in town, we do understand that the town has allowed that, but just to be clear, from the beginning, our agreement with the Select Board has been, we're going to cultivate and process only. It's not a retail sales facility.
What else you plan on putting over there? Route 10 there.
I'm sorry?
Where are you planning on putting over there?
Phase 2, Phase 2 and 3.
Phase 2 and 3, only for cultivation and processing?
What's Phase 2 and 3?
More cultivation facility.
That means growing stuff from the ground up.
Yes.
You're going to have any kind of like shops or whatever over there?
There's no plan for retail in town, no.
No current plans?
No current plans, and we've, even in our hosting agreement with the town, it says clearly, cultivation and processing only. The town, because it's past recreational retail, has asked us to consider that, but at this point in time, we're not. We're focused on building out the cultivation business.
Yes, sir.
Can we get some samples to see if we're.
If you're a patient with a medical marijuana card, you're welcome to go to one of our retail facilities, but again, not this facility.
Otherwise, you have to go to Northham. Yes, sir.
Tom Corrigan, Trail Branch. Can you explain what you mean by the town would maintain its control over the new, any new construction? Did I hear you correctly in saying that?
Over the construction piece, based on the fact that we'd have to get a building permit. So whether it's another steel structure or a closed system greenhouse, we would still have to get a building permit from the Building Commissioner. So that would be the control over the building process, but because it diverts back to Berniston zoning bylaws, and quite honestly, the law is vague, so it's up to the interpretation of the town. If the town decided, "We no longer think this is agriculture," then we would have to go the special permit route. That would be the only way to get to the next phase.
Are you concerned if we pass or don't pass this, what it will mean to the tax structure for your enterprise? Is that on or the original agreement?
No. No, it won't change. Even though we're, so that's actually a great question, sir. Even though we would be in agricultural use, we have agreed in the hosting agreement with the town, so it's in the contract, to be taxed as a regular commercial business at the regular commercial rates, and agreed not to appeal that.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
This, I think, is probably a question for you guys. Can you tell me what is the difference between special permitting process and regular permitting process? How is that going to affect anything?
Who wants to field that? Chris?
Oh, come on, you could do it.
No, no. Been too long.
Chris West, Planning Board. The special permit process, people who need to apply for special permit need to meet certain criteria, so they come to the Planning Board, and in a public hearing that is posted in abutters, property abutters to that property, are also given notice of the process, then are allowed to come and comment also at the public hearing for the special permit. And then during that special permit process, we look at the criteria that may allow or disallow a certain project to happen in town for a use.
And the regular permitting process?
Just a regular permitting process, it's just they go get a building permit. And it's the building inspector actually who starts the whole process. An applicant goes to building inspector with an application for a building, or for a use change or whatever. The building inspector says, "Oh, no." They look at our zoning in town and say, "You need to go see the building, the Planning Board, or you might need to go see the zoning board." Depends on which board oversees that particular special permit.
Yes, Steve?
Yes. One other question. You've given us a great oversight from your point of view. Why are you here? Why are you so afraid that this might change and not allow you to be classified as agricultural, where right now you are not? Why are you suddenly now wanting to change the original designation and now you want to become agriculture?
It's a great question. I would first say that, to be clear, the original designation was agriculture. It wasn't until the last minute that it was changed. And so the change back to agriculture allows us to go back to the assumption that we had made when we built the business plan and raised the capital.
Okay, but why do you want to do it? You originally were agriculture. You went ahead despite not being agricultural and built that plan. Now why are you seeking to go back to agriculture after investing your 1.5 million under a changed designation? Why now suddenly do you want to go back?
Well, he explained that the building inspector changed his perspective on.
Okay, but what does it mean to you?
It gives us more predictability. It allows us to go faster, and it allows us to get Phase 2 and 3 up faster and create more jobs and build the business quicker, and that's important to us.
So you're crouching in terms of, "It's all for us." You want more hiring, more, that sounds very specious. What are you getting at? Why do you want to do it? Don't blow smoke, please. Just tell me economically why you want to go back to agriculture after investing 1.5 million as a non-agricultural facility? That's all I want to know. No smoke, just tell me why you do it.
The 1.5 was the additional cost that brought to us, and that was an unplanned cost. So we now have to go raise the additional capital to build out the rest of the business.
Do you want us to pay for your erroneous mistake?
I'm not asking you to pay for it, and it wasn't our erroneous mistake, it was a change at the last minute. I mean, the town had told us to proceed this way, and literally the day we tried to pull the building permit, we were told, "We no longer think you're an agricultural use." And again, I don't blame the Building Commissioner for that. I understand he was in a very hard position. It was just a huge surprise that created a huge detriment for our business that we're trying to recover from.
Okay, Chris.
One of the things I want to explain is, their facility is in the expedited permitting district. And what Jim Cooneyhan is trying to get at is, the process that they would have to go through every time they wanted to do another building could take several months for them to go through that process. So that's, I think, basically what he's trying to get at, is they don't want to have to go and wait. The Planning Board would have to make a decision within six months. So that could slow up their plans if they're ready to go ahead and build. So I think that's what he's trying to get at, is that that process they wouldn't have to do, but they would have to apply to the building inspector to do any additional buildings there.
And so you are comfortable with that, giving up our right of somewhat control to avoid that?
I didn't say that. I'm just saying that I'm just explaining the process.
Okay, I would ask if you, if you want to speak, you have to be recognized. Yes, sir.
Excuse me. Didn't they get what they originally wanted with that steel shed to grow pot inside it? Wasn't that just the original plan?
That's Phase 1 of the plan, I understand.
Correct. It's currently engineered and designed for three phases. The first phase being a 20,000-square-foot building. The plan's called.
That's what that is.
Correct.
Okay.
And so it would be two more buildings or closed-end greenhouses in addition to that.
Okay, sir, and the second, yes, sir.
So two questions. What happens if we don't? Just the late, just means you've got to go through the special permitting process again, correct?
Correct.
Correct. So if you anticipate in enough time, it actually doesn't slow you down because it is an EPD, so it still needs, within six months. Am I correct there?
Six months is a significant amount of time in this business.
Well, they've been anticipated. I mean, are you already ready to build Phase 2?
I wouldn't say we're ready today. We need to raise the capital, but once we raise the capital, we would be.
So therefore, then raising capital does not happen overnight. Well, we're not going to argue that, but anyway. The worst thing that happened is a six-month delay, anticipate sooner, and begin process sooner. Correct?
I'm not sure that's.
If nothing changes.
I'm not sure that's the worst case because.
What would be worse?
We lost credibility with our investors in Phase 1 because of this last-minute change. It cost us $1,500,000. So we're not sure how they're going to respond if we go back to them and say, "We're not sure what the predictability of this is." They're going to say to me, "If I'm going to write you another check after the last time where you," you know, they're telling us you made a mistake, we want to make sure it's predictable.
This would be, you would go to them and you'd be like, "No, we, okay, we know this is the, this is the result. We know this is what the plan is, this is how the town feels, this is how we're being classified, not how the town feels. This is how we're being classified based on this article, let's say, getting voted down. There is no surprise in this." So it is EPD, six months, because that's part of the determination.
Okay, sir, in the back. No, no, well, you can come back to it.
It seems to me that a business that came to Berniston with best intentions and gone through all the processes, got nailed by a change of attitude by a state worker, and now he has to change regulations to fit his needs. He's asking us to help him do that, which I think is a logical and reasonable thing to do. And I'd like to.
Okay, thank you. Okay, sir, now, why don't you give your second?
The second was, where is Donna to explain layman's terms? Put it in layman's terms. Where is our town attorney to put it in layman's terms? Because that is huge to me. I mean, there's forgetting explanations, where is Ms. McNichol that is fantastic at putting stuff in layman's terms that we can all understand?
She's not your attorney.
Well, she's the empty chair, I can realize that. Who else can put in layman's terms legally?
She's in another town meeting tonight.
Okay, sir, and another one?
I think it's, still seeking, I think we're saying the same thing, I'm still seeking some clarity on what the town is able to do within a timeframe. So for example, if they apply for a building permit, and does the town, after they have applied for a building permit, can the town then decide, "Well, we really want you to get a special permit for that next structure?" Or how does that, I mean, you talk about autonomy, the town would still be able to change what it was looking for in terms of expectations. Maybe I'm not understanding this correctly.
Okay, so, yeah.
The town would have to come out and say that they, at some point in the future after this is enacted, say that they no longer consider their entity to be agriculture. Right now, the Planning Board stance, the Select Board stance, Town Council stance, and ZDA stance was when they started their process, they were considered agriculture.
Gotcha.
The state then specifically outright said cultivation of marijuana is not considered agriculture by the state law.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Yes, sir.
Sorry, you want to clarify, so you were wanting this to be voted down, correct? I just want to make sure I'm understanding this.
I don't understand your question. Can you say that again?
His position is that he's wanting this article to be voted down.
His present position?
He's proposed this.
This is his, this is his proposal?
You were wanting to be, shall not be deemed agriculture.
Right.
Because it's the definition in state law.
So once we're carved out of that definition of agriculture, it then reverts back to the Berniston zoning bylaws. And I agree, it's very confusing.
It's very confusing. So you want this to be passed.
Correct, so that we are not included in the state definition of agriculture, and it then goes back to Berniston zoning.
Okay, so if it doesn't get taxed, how does that affect you guys? It delays things six months, or what have we talked about, correct? I understand this gentleman's point of view, it's like, look, he came here with good intentions and all that, and he can clearly box it up. But I also understand Clayton's point, okay, that the business should have a plan, and the plan to build a $20,000 square foot structure is going to take, one, six months to plan. I don't think you did yourself a lot of favors in town by marijuana beside. From my understanding, it's that when this was initially proposed, first it was going to be up by the old Phases Restaurant, then it was going to be down below, and when that decided, it was going to be kind of boxed in, and nobody would see it, discreet. The next thing we know, it's got a big construction site 100 feet from the road, and it's not a quaint little New England building, it's a big tin box. Then I have two more of those tin boxes. I'm not sure, you know, a lot of people are in favor of that. So I'm not sure you're really having a lot of, you know, making a lot of friends in the structure you're putting up regardless of what goes in, just from aesthetic standpoint. From my standpoint, if you're going to put up a million-dollar building, whatever it is, you're going to have to take one in six months and have it well thought out, Clayton pointed well taken, and say, "We want some control back for our town." So that's my point, is that I'm not in favor of giving you all the control. I'm in favor of keeping control amongst our town, because it's our town, and you guys have really shown a whole lot of interest in making it part of the town, you know, in terms of aesthetics. So that's my concern, and I don't see, the track record that would show it to be Phase 2 and 3 would be any different. So from my standpoint, I'd like control for the town, because the town's more important to me.
Fair enough. I would just say a few things. One, it's still an ongoing construction project. The Planning Board required us to put additional plantings, we have to finish the blacktop. It certainly will still be and look like a steel building, because that is the best structure for this particular purpose. But it will be cleaned up, there will be plantings made. We're not allowed to put plantings against the building by state law, but there were requirements placed on us by the Planning Board that we will absolutely adhere to to make it look more aesthetically pleasing. And again, I would just say that I don't think you give up control because, again, it just revert, it gives control back to the town to decide. If the town decides, "We don't think this is agriculture any longer," then the only route for us is the special permit route. So I do think it gives control back to the town.
Yeah, if you could identify yourself.
Hi, so I'm Paige Talinski. I'm from the Office of Representative Paul Mark, and I felt like your comment was a really good entryway to read the letter that he put together to ask me to read tonight, which is why I decided to bring it up now.
Yeah, and the clerk asked me if we could have a copy of that letter for the record.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay, you have, proceed, please.
Could you use the mic? Yeah.
Yeah, sure. Dear Rex, I apologize for not being able to be there in person with you tonight and for not being present to answer any follow-up questions about this process that you might have. The Select Board has asked me to send along a statement to help clear up what a home rule petition is, how a home rule petition works through the legislative process, and why the town is facing this decision at a special town meeting. I will be as thorough and informative as I possibly can be in this statement. I would like to thank my district aide Paige for attending on my behalf to reading this letter. In Massachusetts, each city or town has the ability to request a law be passed through the legislature that would be specific to that respective municipality. the legislature that would be specific to that respective municipality. For a town the size of Bernardston?
Berniston.
Bernardston. Sorry, I probably stamped in, and I've never said that town name out loud. A town meeting or special town meeting must be held for such a request to happen. The people at the special town meeting must decide if they feel a law specific to the town would be beneficial and worth pursuing. You will make that decision tonight. If the special town meeting votes yes and decides to pursue the home rule legislation, then I and our incoming Senator Joe Commerford, who file a language approved as a bill when the 191st session of the Massachusetts General Court begins in January. A home rule bill proceeds through the legislature like any other bill that I may file. It must be passed by the House of Representatives and by the Senate, and then sent to the governor, where he may sign it into law or veto it. The only relevant difference is where the bill originates, and in this instance, it would be a request from the people of Burnston for a law that would be specific to Burnston. The reason you are facing this decision tonight is because of a perceived flaw in the language of the marijuana law that was originally put into place by a ballot question in 2016 and then modified by the legislature in 2017. The language that is found in our current law specifies that the growing of marijuana is not to be considered agriculture. This loophole in the law is causing problems in a couple of instances throughout Massachusetts. Locally, farmers who are subject to an agricultural preservation restriction, an APR, are being denied the ability to grow industrial hemp because hemp, like recreational marijuana, is not considered agriculture under the current law. Businesses engaging in the production of marijuana are likewise precluded from the benefits of current agricultural laws because they are not included in the definition of agriculture. Attempts to change this definition at the statewide legislative level have been unsuccessful up to this point. There has been a reluctance to reopen the marijuana debate from the governor and our legislative leadership. This leads us back to why you are being asked to consider the warrant article tonight. The thinking is that if Bernardston seeks language that would classify marijuana as agriculture within Bernardston, the reluctance to reopen the debate might disappear because the home rule bill would be specific to Bernardston. Home rule petitions are often treated with a different level of deference than normal bills, and in most cases are scrutinized by their application to the local community as opposed to potential consequences, potential consequences for the entire state. The people of Bernardston must make the final decision if you think that this change in classification would be a good thing for the town, and if it is something that is necessary to pursue. The will of the people of Bernardston, as expressed through the town meeting vote, will have my full support as always. If that vote is yes, then I will advocate for your home rule petition vigorously, and will do everything I can to get it signed into law as quickly as possible. Thank you for your attention, your thoughtful consideration, and for the continued opportunity to serve as your voice in the Massachusetts House of Representatives. Sincerely, Rep. Paul Mark.
I think we had one of those. Yeah.
I would just like to say, when we first started with the agreement with Happy Valley, who's now Heirloom Collectives, we were interested in raising capital for the town. If it was listed as agriculture, we would have to do agricultural rate. But Heirloom Collection, who was Happy Valley, said that they were willing to pay, in the host agreement, what, regular homes paid in taxes. So then we let it go through agriculture. We argued whether it was manufacturing or agriculture in the beginning. We decided at the end it was going to be agricultural. I mean, growing plants is agricultural, that's what we thought. And then after we did that, the state changed the rules about growing marijuana. So it's really a legislative problem that the legislative should have dealt with, but they didn't dare open up the bill, the marijuana bill, because so many other towns would come forth with problems, just like we have.
But as a by-right farming community, you recognize it as agricultural. Jim Hawkins has no control as long as a building permit satisfies those needs. And it's like, all control is lost, not all, sorry, 95% control is lost. Versus in the EPD, they still have the six-month process, which is part of the EPD district where they are, and the town still maintains some control. They at least require them to answer to some standards. Whereas if we go, remove them from agricultural, from the state, means they're agricultural by the town, means we lose.
No, it means that.
We lose a lot of control.
We feel as selectmen that they've been pretty good neighbors to us so far.
I know they haven't been pretty good neighbors far, and we've been pretty good neighbors back.
That's true.
So why change the system that exists in place now to suddenly we're not good neighbors, and we don't have to be good neighbors? I'm not saying you won't be. I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying, why change what is already working, where control is still maintained? This is almost like.
Well, I'm not going to argue with this. You may have some really good points, but I will say that they are at a disadvantage compared to every other medical marijuana grower in the state.
No, they're not. They're all manufactured.
Yes, they are, because none of them are considered agriculture, they're considered manufacturing.
Right. So where is that a disadvantage? Because every one of them designated by the state as manufacturing, that sounds like a level playing field. So I don't understand where they're at a disadvantage there when the state legislature, as you stated, has dictated this is manufacturing.
Except for them.
Except for them, huh?
Because they fell into a small window where they were designated as agriculture. Is that correct?
We were the literally the only.
Only one.
Medical marijuana specimen in the state, the only one affected by this change in the law. And so I understand your point, but I wouldn't say you give up 95% of the control, because Jim Hawkins, he has the building permit control, plus he has the ability to say, if he does say, in my opinion, even if you make this change, and even if it makes it through a home rule petition and the governor signs it, if Jim Hawkins then says, I don't think it's agriculture anymore, then we have to go to special permit group. So the control is still.
That would take a lot for him to do that, but I mean.
Probably did it once before.
Okay, my question then, how did this only affect you when all medical marijuana is considered manufacturing?
Because we were the only approved agricultural grower in the state. You know, I apologize. I'll try to do this quickly, because I know people don't want to hear the history of other towns.
Well, no, this is, it plays a role.
There was a cranberry farmer in Plimpton, Mass., out on the south coast of Massachusetts. He also happened to be a wealthy real estate developer, but he was trying to force the town of Plimpton to allow him to do a cultivation facility. Not as in agriculture, he just was trying to force the facility in. They didn't want it. Because of that, their state representative, Representative Nick Calter, came forward and filed a bill that changed the law for the entire state to address that one situation. That bill then went forward and died in the legislature, and it wasn't until the last week of December of 2016 that, when the legislature was looking for something to attach, the amendment shifting the recreational law six months, they resurrected it. At that time, we said, this is going to affect us and only us, and they said to us, it's not intended to hurt you, it won't hurt you, as long as Burnston still believes it's agriculture, we're fine with it. And again, it wasn't until nine months later that we tried to get the building permit, that we were then told, and we checked in. I mean, I have a voicemail as recently as July 24th, 2017, where I was told, yes, you can have your building permit, yes, you're an agricultural use, after the law was changed. In September, we tried to get the building permit, that's when he was told, I'm just not comfortable doing it. Again, I don't blame him personally at all. I understand the tough spot he's put in. And hopefully that history helps answer your question.
Okay, yes, sir, if you could identify yourself.
My name's Tom Carney, and I work with Heirloom. And one thing I would add is, Senator Brady, who's Plimpton Falls in his area, we have met with him about this issue. And he, who was involved in passing the legislation, that did away with that Plimpton facility that the town did not want, he supports this issue for us, because he felt we were unintentionally hurt by something that really had nothing to do with us. And he has, I have spoken to him many times, and he is going to support this home rule petition, because he felt that something that he was dealing with in Plimpton ultimately hurt Burnston.
Move the question?
Yeah, go ahead. Yes, sir.
Move the question.
Okay.
One last.
Okay, go ahead.
So if you're the only one affected by this, what happens if we don't change this, and you just become like all the other medicinal marijuana?
No, I'd say that again.
Without changing this, how would they be, how can they change their structures so they're in line with all the, if they're the only ones affected by them being called manufacturing, without town recognizing this, how do you, what else, whatever, what's an alternative solution?
Do you understand the question?
Again, we have that loss, that unexpected loss. Our business plan is 1.5 million.
I got you.
And so we now have to raise money for phase two and phase three. That's going to create a challenge for us, because there's a lack of predictability. Our investors are saying to us, you told us you were going the agricultural route, you told us you double-checked it, it changed at the last minute, and a bunch of our money got wasted. And so it'll make it very difficult for us to raise the money to go faster and try to bring more jobs to town and build our business quicker.
So the question, as I understood it, was, if you don't get this special legislation, how can you, how can you be on the same level as all the other manufacturers? Is your answer that you can't be on the same level unless this special legislation passes?
I think we would be on the same level at that point in time, but we were the only ones that suffered this economic loss.
All right, but his question was, if the town doesn't agree to the special legislation, if you lose the vote tonight, is it possible for you to operate on the same, on a level playing field with the other manufacturers in the state?
Yes, it's possible, assuming you can raise the money to build out the business.
But that's an issue either way.
But you're saying that would become more difficult.
It's less of an issue if you have the predictability.
But if you, okay, if we say no, then you have the predictability also.
But it makes it harder, because now we have it out in the use pack. But if you're now. Because these are the folks that have already suffered the loss.
I got you.
Okay.
I think it's an assumption that this is our personal money? We bring this money from the.
No, I get.
Okay, okay, sir.
Thank you. Ron Fulton, Foxville Road. Am I to infer from what you're saying, given the difficulties that would ensue on you if we don't pass this article tonight, that you would have difficulty raising money for phase two and phase three of your long-term project? What damage would that do to the prospects of your business being a success? Would your business now be threatened with failure, if you only had to stop at phase one?
Absolutely, yes.
So you're depending on phase two and phase three for all of it to work, or for any of it to work?
Correct. Our business model calls for us to have two more buildings and 60,000 square feet, whether the additional 40 are in Burnston or not.
Okay.
We believe there's a level of scale that you have to have to get operational efficiencies, and we believe that minimum scale is 50,000 square feet, and ideally something closer to 60.
And you have 20 now.
Correct. Though I would, the full 20 is not all cultivation and processing. There's employee locker rooms, conference rooms.
I understand, but in the larger sense, the long-term success of your entire enterprise depends upon you getting, securing additional funding to proceed with other phases.
I think it would have a significant impact, yes.
And if we vote this down tonight, that will create serious problems for you going forward.
We'll have some hard conversations with our investors, for sure.
Okay, okay, sir. Go ahead.
I would love if I could ask a planning person a question, define a buzzers. When you're defining the two permits, two different kinds of permits, the buzzers have to be notified?
For a public hearing.
How do you define a buzzer? I mean, is it like, grass touching grass, or within a mile? I mean, I don't know.
Within 200 yards.
200 yards?
Yeah, of the proposed study.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, question over here.
What are you designated right now?
I believe under the Burnston zoning law, we're designated as an MNTC, Medical Marijuana Treatment Center, in the EPD, Exited Permitting District.
And are you agricultural?
I would refer to the planning board members.
Are you agricultural?
We are not agricultural.
Okay, sir. I'm just reading what it says here. You want us to vote that you will not be defined as agriculture.
Correct, and I recognize it's confusing, not be defined as agriculture under the state law, because the state law specifically excludes cannabis cultivation from the definition of agriculture. That would then revert us back to the zoning bylaws of the town of Burnston.
This is true.
I have to read this about five times myself, but sure.
Okay, over, yes, sir.
The last thing I'll say is, you know, I understand what you're saying, but honestly, I'm pretty sure your investors are going to be okay. I'm pretty sure you will find your investors, talk them into it, bring Donna here to town, bring her down to the fire table, have a conversation, I'm sure they'll come through. Again, I'll reiterate the fact that if you're from outside the area, that's fine. We appreciate it, as Clayton said, we like your neighbors, good neighbors, we want you to be good neighbors. I don't want to give up any control from the town's standpoint. That's what I'm.
Yes, sir.
Totally respect your question.
Yeah, the question's been moved. Okay, okay, all in favor, motion to move the question, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. We'll proceed to a vote. Now, I'm going to ask a show of hands. On the, on the Article One, which consists of Section One and Section Two, I think you want to be clear, because there was a question before, a voting yes is a vote to adopt the language set out in Article One. So I'm going to ask all who are in favor of voting of that article, Article One, will you raise your hand at this time? Okay, if we can have a counter. Okay, I have, I have 20. Is that your count?
21.
Okay, 21, and I'm informed that there are 31 voters who are present at this time. So just for the, make sure we've got it right. All who are opposed, please raise your hand. Okay.
I only get five opposed. The rest are not voting.
Okay, okay, the ayes have it. Article One is passed. Okay, moving on to Article Two. To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to purchase a front-end loader with 60-inch forks for the highway department at a net cost of $153,900, or take any vote or votes in relation thereto. And the select board and finance committee recommend passage of this article. Is there a motion with respect to this article?
So moved.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
In the wording, it's unclear as to whether this is a new vehicle or a used vehicle.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Anything anybody want to say about it that wasn't set at the annual meeting? Yes, sir.
Yeah, this is a 24-year-old machine. Gary Weatherby, the town highway boss is back there. Currently, Gary, what's the status of that loader?
We've lost third and fourth gear in it, so basically, we can mix some sand up the dump with it and load the truck, but that's all we can use it for. The bucket on it's pretty much worn out. If I gave Stan some notes back years ago, I did basically a study of how many years we didn't really put much money into the loader, and then like the last five years, we probably put well over 10,000. And the fix for it now is a rebuilt transmission bucket. You have to pull the cab completely off this thing, and when you do it, you might as well change all your hoses. So we're probably looking at 30,000 just to fix this, so it'd be usable, and then it's got about 9,500 hours on it, so I personally don't think it's worth it, but you as the voters, you can make that decision.
One other point that I made.
Yeah.
Gary did put a little list together for me, and it states that from September 18th of 2008 to November 5th of 2015, they paid remaining repairs $2,665 for repairs on it. From 2/11/16 until our current date, we paid out $10,015 for repairs on it. Now, we tried to get this passed back in, made on our annual meeting, and at that time, we were going to get $20,000 for that loader for actual trade-in. Gary's talked to the gentleman, and the gentleman knows that the vehicle is basically just scrap metal, and he's still going to give us 16,000 for it. So we lost 4,000 on that, so it's a good deal, and it should take us for another 20, 24 years, hopefully.
Okay, any other discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Paige, I'm just wondering if this equipment, it serves all the function that it needs to serve?
There's no one?[1797.91]
There's no one?
Yeah.
Yes, Sebastian.
Yes, sir. How long will it take to get it?
I think we'd probably be able to get it by the end of December.
What was it, the end of December?
I think it was the end of December.
I knew it was this.
It could run into January. It depends on how many get sold and what their availability is. Because we have to go through, well, it was a state contract bid, and they really did give a good deal on it. So they're basically the vendor that we have to get it through.
Just a question for the finance committee. How much money will be left in the stabilization account?
That's not on this question. That's the next item on the agenda.
Move the question. Move the question.
Okay, okay, all in favor of moving the question?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then we'll proceed to a vote on Article Two. It's unanimous. Okay, okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Passes. Article Three, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the recycling revolving fund the amount of $18,000 and to transfer from the stabilization fund the amount of $135,900, for a total of $153,900 for the purchase of the front-end loader or take any vote or votes in relation thereto. The select board and the finance committee recommend passage of this article, and it should be noted that a two-thirds vote is required for passage. So any motions with respect to this article?
So moved.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Yes.
Now I want to ask my question.
Okay.
So the balance would be in the neighborhood of 200,000 that would be left in there. Unfortunately, I grabbed the wrong financial statement when I came tonight, so I can't give you the exact dollar. Call me tomorrow and I'll tell you.
The reason we're recommending this is we looked at the interest rate that they were going to charge us, and it was over 5%. We looked at stabilization funds that we have in the bank. We're getting 0.8%, so why not borrow from ourselves?
Okay, any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Well, a lot of times the pallets that we give for the transfer station bags and all that stuff from the trucks. We do have a set of forks that we hook onto the front of the backhoe, but because you can't detach the bucket, you can't see, and you need people standing there literally, and it's not safe.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Okay, seeing none, ask all in favor of Article Three, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Article Three passes unanimously. Article Four, to see if the town will vote to authorize the town accountant to move the balance in account number 6305465, the recreation activities program in field maintenance, to special funds account number 286, the Kuanis Recreation Equipment Fund, or take any votes or votes in relation thereto. And this article is recommended by the select board and the finance committee.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, can I explain?
Please.
When the accountant entered the votes from annual town meeting, this amount is from the Kuanis Fund. You know, every year, $1,000 is taken from the trust and put into a spending account for the recreation commission. And they save that money to use for specific things. They don't necessarily spend it each year. And the trust document that's written from Kuanis allows them to save this up and keep it. Because the accountant entered into that 5465 account, instead of the revolving account, it should fall into free cash and would be lost to the recreation commission. And they use it primarily for maintenance at the field. So we're asking you to correct that error, and our new accountant knows how to handle this in the future, so it shouldn't happen again.
Yes.
Ron Fulton, Fox Hill. One of the amounts in question to be moved?
$1,000.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none, a vote on Article Four. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Having acted on the four articles in the warrant, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.